I hereby call to order the public meeting, excuse me, the public hearing on budgets before the Board of Education for Womet Public School District 39 this Monday, August 27, 2018. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mark Steen.
Here.
Jones is ready.
Here.
Tracy Curney.
Here.
Frank Manzito.
Here.
Alice Shaugh.
Here.
Lisa Shutterface.
Here.
Thank you. And now to start us off, Principal Jackson has some comments and then will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, as I understand it.
That is correct. So I wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update about High Crest and our construction. We have spent the last few days, five days or so, moving into our new office. I have some pictures to show you. So this is, this is more filled in now, but it's a little messier, so I chose not to take a picture. But it's waiting some file cabinets and things in this picture. This is where our secretaries will sit now. This is, I actually have a new office with a window, which is lovely. Again, waiting some furniture and things on the walls, but it's new and light and bright and welcoming for all of our kids. Teachers were coming back to school this week, and we're so excited to walk into a workroom and a lounge that's clean and air-conditioned, which is amazing, and with new mailboxes and just space to work and take care of the things that they need to do to set up school. And then our auditorium, it's a huge difference. Both of our drama teachers at High Crest were just floored by walking into the auditorium. We're having our back-to-school meetings with teachers tomorrow in the auditorium, but the seats are just amazing and it just feels like a whole new environment. It's amazing what some paint and new seats can do for the environment there. I thought I'd throw in a couple of pictures. I had the chance to walk out to the new addition, the classrooms that are being built. There's four classrooms and two to four small group spaces. They have a flexible wall in them between the classrooms. These are due to be finished hopefully by the beginning of December. They have the second floor on. These are pictures of the second floor. These are the first floor, so you can see there's a roof on top of them. Right now, the masons are working to cover the walls with brick before the start of school, hopefully, so we can maneuver the walls so we have parking in our parking lot. But it's all been very exciting and lots of smiles on our faces as we're starting school, so we can't wait to get the kids in there to see it. So thank you very much for all of your support of that effort. Let's rise to say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, to which we stand, one nation, united states.
Thank you very much, Principal Jackson, and thanks for sharing those pictures. It looks great. I would like to remind everyone at this time that this is a public meeting and all are among neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon, that everyone treat each other kindly and with the proper respect, and refrain from distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, cheering, clapping, or booing. Thank you. I also want to note that we actually, for administrative reasons, have three meetings tonight, so if you're keeping track and want to stay for the whole thing, you will see that we're going through three different meetings. Please don't be confused by the opening and closing of meetings in the middle. That brings us to our budget presentations and Dr. Lechner.
Yes, the Board approved the tentative fiscal year 19 budget at its May 21 meeting. At tonight's public hearing, Ellen Crispino will provide another budget overview. She'll highlight any changes that we've recommended since the May meeting, and after Board approval tonight, the budget will be submitted to the Regional Office of Education and the State Board of Education. Ms. Crispino has this report.
Hello. In January, the budget guidelines were established in fiscal year 19. In the following months, the non-operating and then the operating fund budgets were presented. After the tentative budget was approved, the district published notice in the Womet Life and the budget was on display for the required 30 days. As we received updated information, we made a few changes in the operating fund budgets from the tentative budget that was presented in May. For example, state grant allocations are estimated in May until actual numbers are provided in June or July. Also, ISB establishes the TRS on-behalf contribution rate. That amount increased by $699,000 using the most recent rate published by TRS for fiscal year 18, which is 44.61 percent. This will be discussed in more detail shortly. Revenue increased by $207,000 from the tentative budget. State transportation revenue increased by $152,000 based on higher special ed transportation costs in fiscal year 18. Interest revenue was increased by $145,000 to increasing interest rates. Levy revenue decreased by $195,000 to reflect revenue based on the final 2017 levy and estimated property tax refunds. Tuition revenue charged to other districts for special education students increased by $75,000 based on projected enrollment. Expenditures increased by $436,000 over the tentative budget. An additional $195,000 was added for staffing changes made due to enrollment throughout the summer. $215,000 was added for architect and engineering services related to the kindergarten enrichment program. $162,000 was added for capital projects associated with security. Transportation costs were decreased by $138,000 based on fiscal year 18 actuals and projected route costs for fiscal year 19. Here we have an operating fund summary. The operating funds make up 92 percent of the total budget. As you can see from the slide, there is a projected deficit in the following funds: education, TORT, operations and maintenance, and IMRF social security. In the education fund, the deficit is due primarily to a reallocation of the tax levy to the operations and maintenance fund and a permanent inter-fund transfer of $750,000 for planned construction projects that are drawing on fund balances. The notice for this transfer was published in the Womet Life on August 16. In addition, TORT and IMRF social security funds are utilizing fund balances as the levy is being reallocated to cover the one-time construction projects in the operations and maintenance funds. On this slide, you will see under the education fund, the on-behalf revenue equal to $4.7 million and the same amount listed under the expenditure section. As a reminder, under current law, this $14.7 million is what the state of Illinois pays towards the teacher pension program on behalf of District 39. This payment is cost-neutral to the district at this time, and the expenditures and revenues are equivalent. Money is neither received from the state nor paid out by the district. The district is required to make accounting entries for this amount in the annual budget. As mentioned before, this money merely flows through our budget and is a state obligation to fund at this point in time. In the operations and maintenance fund, you see other expenses in the amount of $5.4 million. Included in this is $4.6 million in construction costs that are being transferred to Capital Projects Fund. You will see the same amount on the next slide under the Capital Projects column. In the operations and maintenance fund, capital outlay is $1.2 million and includes costs related to the 10-year health, life, safety plan as well as security improvements. Next, we have the non-operating funds. In the capital project funds, as mentioned on the previous slide, you see the revenue transferred from the operations and maintenance and the related expenses. Funds will be transferred monthly to cover the actual expenditures, and this fund will zero out each month. There is a slight deficit in the debt service fund based on estimated levy receipts. Life safety has no activity in fiscal year 19. The new 10-year life safety survey was submitted this year to ISB for identified future projects. Until additional funding becomes available in fiscal year 20, funds will be used out of the operation and maintenance fund through our annual $600,000 allotment. Here we have the all-fund summary. As you can see, we are showing a deficit of $3.2 million in total for all funds. This anticipated deficit is due to one-time capital projects budgeted in fiscal year 19 utilizing fund balance. For operating funds, we are projecting a total fund balance of $36.2 million in the operating funds at the end of fiscal year 19. This is 55.7 percent of expenditures at the end of the fiscal year. For non-operating funds, we are projecting a fund balance of $1.6 million at the end of fiscal year 19. And for all funds, we are projecting a balance of $37.9 million at the end of fiscal year 19. Are there any questions?
Okay. Seeing none, any questions from the Board? No? Great. Go ahead, Ray.
Yes, next, District 39 continues to serve as the fiscal agent for the WCSEA. The WCSEA is the Womet Community Special Education Agreement. It provides special education financial umbrella for District 39 and Evoqua District 37. The State Board of Education Funding and Disbursements Division requires the WCSEA to keep separate accounting records and to follow the same Illinois state budget guidelines that are required of District 39 and all other school districts. Therefore, we have a separate budget. This budget literally provides a mechanism for flowing through and distributing state and federal dollars to both school systems, and Ellen has this report as well.
Thank you. This slide shows the budget for the Womet Community Special Education Agreement. As you can see, our revenue and expenses are equal at $1.1 million with funds flowing in from the state and out to the member districts. The next step in the process is the final adoptions of the budget this evening. Once the budgets are approved, they will be submitted to the ROE, the Cook County Clerk and ISB. Are there any questions?
Seeing none, thank you very much. I do want to remind the audience that the Board has been reviewing this budget for five or six months now, so if you're wondering why there are no questions, we're fairly, I think people are feeling well informed, which is great. Thank you, Ellen, for that. This brings us to the first opportunity for the audience to address the Board regarding the presentation of budgets. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on, and that takes us to the Board discussion of budgets. Does the Board have any questions or comments on these budgets? Okay. Then I, sorry, did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Having no further business, I request a motion to adjourn to the public hearing on the resolution authorizing a permanent inter-fund transfer.
I move to adjourn to the permanent inter-fund transfer hearing.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
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 The motion is carried by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the next public hearing, which means that we once again get to call the roll. First, I will hereby call to order this public hearing on the resolution authorizing a permanent inter-fund transfer of the Board of Education for Womet Public School District D-39 for Monday, August 27, 2018. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mark Steen.
Here.
Jones is ready.
Here.
Tracy Curney.
Here.
Frank Manzito.
Here.
Alice Shaugh.
Here.
Thank you very much, and Dr. Lechner, that takes us to your piece.
Yes, and this was just reviewed in the school budget, that the administration is recommending a permanent inter-fund transfer of $750,000 from the educational fund to the operations and maintenance fund. This transfer is strictly designed to pay for construction projects. This permanent transfer requires notice in a newspaper that was made on the 16th of August, and then a public hearing tonight, and then after this public hearing, there will be a resolution later than which the Board can approve. Ellen, was there anything to add?
No.
Does the Board have any questions? Okay. Because this is a separate meeting, we will once again ask for, or give the audience an opportunity to address the Board regarding this resolution. Are there any audience members who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, thank you very much, and we can have a Board discussion. Is there any Board discussion? Great. I think that takes us to adjourning to the public hearing on resolution to authorize a permanent inter-fund transfer. May I have such a motion?
We just had that meeting.
Oh, adjourn to the, I'm sorry, we should be adjourning to the regular meeting, and thank you very much. There, I'm glad, yeah.
I move to adjourn to the regular meeting.
Terrific. Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
The motion carries by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the regular meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll for the regular meeting?
Mark Steen.
Here.
Jones is ready.
Here.
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 Thank you very much. Okay. And now to our more typical business. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the June 18, 2018, regular and executive session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the June 18, 2018, regular and executive session meetings.
Great. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there any concerns, comments, errors, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
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 Are there any nays? Thank you very much. The motion carries by general consent. And this brings us to an opportunity for the audience to address the Board in our regular Board meeting. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to our Board reports. First, our Board Committee reports, and I think School Finance, Frank, you've got that.
The Finance Committee met as part of the Committee of the Whole on Monday, August 20. As we discussed in earlier budget hearings, we, in the Finance Committee meeting, spent a lot of time talking about the results from last year's expenditures and this year's budget. We also talked about the budget hearing information that you heard earlier from WCSEA. The next item is in an ongoing effort to review our expenditures and budget. It was decided that hiring an outside agency to review our expenses would be worthwhile. At the next Finance meeting, the administration will bring recommendations for firms and a cost estimate. And finally, we agreed to do a deeper dive into appropriate reserves levels at the next Finance Committee meeting, which will be held Monday, September 17.
Thank you very much. Our next Committee report is Facility Development, Alice.
Right. The Facilities Development Committee met as part of the Committee of the Whole on August 20, along with the Finance Committee here at the MEC. We discussed three topics. The first was summer 2018 construction in High Crest. You just heard about that. So the project came in under budget and on schedule, and we're moving into the offices and the lounge areas, as you heard. In addition, I just wanted to mention that the addition of the office addition for High Crest School puts into place improved safety measures for that school, including the two-buzz system, which we have at all of our other schools. So we're happy to have that in place. The four-classroom addition is very much still under construction, but we expect that that will be ready to go in December or January, but in time for school, when students come back in January. The second topic of discussion, the Facilities Development Committee, was kindergarten enrichment. Colby Lewis, our STR architect, brought the Committee up to speed about the work that's been happening over the summer. As you recall, the Board is planning a two-phase construction project at our grade schools to build out classrooms so that we can begin to offer kindergarten enrichment beginning the 2020-2021 school year. Central and Harper Schools will be the first two to receive additions and changes to the school so that we have enough classrooms for kindergarten enrichment. That will be Phase 1, and STR has been refining those plans. Our next steps are to continue to work on those plans with our staff and administration and to start to design the character of the new spaces, the internal parts of the new spaces. We should have initial cost estimates next month, and construction is planned to begin either beginning of the summer in 2019, latest fall 2019. Our third topic of discussion was High Crest Phase 2 construction, which is planned for next summer. That will include the Learning Commons for High Crest Middle School and redesign of the special education classrooms. At our meeting, we looked at initial cost estimates, and more work is underway to refine the plans and the budget, and construction is planned to commence when school gets out next spring. The next facilities meeting will be also on September 17, along with the Finance Committee meeting. And that's it.
Thank you very much, and I think you have the Strategy Committee as well.
Yes, the Strategy Committee met today, 5:30 here at the MEC as a part of the Committee of the Whole. We discussed the 2018-2019 proposed strategic plan. Committee members commented on the work that the administrators have done over the summer, and the plan will be fine-tuned, and it will be presented at our next Board of Education meeting on September 12, 17, or something like that, at the end of September. Oh, no, it's the 20th something in September. The Strategy Committee does not meet again until next January.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that brings us to our legislative update, and Tracy.
Thank you. Not allowed to jump up and down or stomp your feet over this last summer, kind of neutral, but a few things did happen, a few things to note. Just yesterday, Governor Rauner vetoed the bill, which would have set the statewide minimum teacher salary at $40,000 by 2023, I'm sorry, by the 2022-2023 school year. This was Senate Bill 2982, Andy Minar's bill, and would have taken effect in 1920, in the following year, 2019-20. Lawmakers do plan to take up this bill again in November, in the November veto session, when the bill's sponsor is certain to file a motion to override the veto. Two other bills that were of interest and were being watched. One, the governor, it was the Senate Bill 2572 that would have established 150-minute-per-week standard of physical education. This bill was a rollback in the gains and flexibility for school districts that came through last year's education funding bill, 1942. The governor vetoed that bill as well. One the governor actually signed, though, was Senate Bill 2428, which would allow students, regardless of their ability to pay, to accumulate a minimum school lunch debt of $500. Once the $500 threshold had been passed, schools would have to go through a state reimbursement and withholding program to attend to recoup the money owed. The governor signed that into law and that became effective yesterday. Really? That's the big news over the summer in the legislature. I would imagine seeing much of the same through November 6, as it's an election year, but we'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. That brings us to information items. Ray.
Yes, the Board received written communication from Victoria Shoemaker regarding the proposed high school report card and grading system. Additionally, Olenna Chirik submitted a petition requesting that for 2018-19 school year, District 39 not use proposed standards-based progress indicators in place of a traditional grading system at High Crest Middle School.
And I think we'll have some additional information in just a moment. Okay. That brings us to administrative announcements.
Yes, District 39 welcomed all teachers during their, all new teachers during their orientation from Monday, August 20 to Thursday, August 23. Orientation topics ranged from District 39 professional expectations to curriculum standards, as well as student and school safety. Paraprofessional training was held earlier today with topics that included CPR, technology integration, supporting students in classrooms, and much more. And this Wednesday, we'll welcome all staff to our annual District-wide Institute Day. After a fun and motivating welcome back, teachers will engage in breakout sections, focusing on preparing students for arrival. And for the first half-day of school on Thursday, August 30, we are looking very much to welcoming our students back. Summer construction update, bottom line is it's been covered by everybody tonight at about High Crest, so I'm going to skip repeating that. High Crest Middle School report cards. With any impactful change, it's important to engage all stakeholders in the conversation. However, District 39 did not engage all stakeholders when considering changes in the High Crest report cards. As a result, District 39 will pause on the recommended report card changes for 2018-19 school year. While a pause doesn't stop our work that we have done, it will allow us to better involve parents, students, in this process. So I'm going to be real clear, for the 2018-19 school year, we will maintain the traditional grades, A, B, C, D, while providing as well the additional descriptions recommended for grade-level academic standards. To that end, then, parents and staff focus groups will be formed, parent information nights will be provided, and will include participation of experts in the field. And then finally, Freedom of Information Act requests, we had two this month, for the Womet Community Special Education Agreement and District 39, from Kate Smizer of NBC Universal, requesting records sufficient to show all cases where plaintiffs were paid by verdict, settlement, or satisfaction as a result of sexual misconduct or sex/gender discrimination from January 2008 to the present. The district also received a FOIA request for Eric M. Potter, so for any or an all annual or multi-year contracts with firms for residency checks, truancy investigations for the past five years, and we had neither.
Okay. Thank you very much. I believe that brings us to our strategic plan updates, the CRC report.
Yes, okay.
Response to the CRC report.
I am proud to say that for more than four decades, the Community Review Committee has united stakeholders and established an expansive set of initiatives that support transformative growth in District 39, all tied to our mission. Each spring, the CRC generates a report on an annual topic of community interest. This report provides the district strategic recommendations to consider. And then what happens is during the summer, the administrative team with the superintendent review the CRC report, and then in August, we present a formal response describing the implementation of CRC recommendations. In 2018, the CRC report is entitled "Differentiation and Personalized Learning," and the CRC recommendations will be supported in our strategic plan that you'll be seeing next month, and we've pretty much adopted all of their recommendations. They include, "District should design professional development opportunities providing peer and collegial observations, permitting teachers to learn from one another." District 39 needs to review how to better align staff roles, supporting differentiation such as the differentiation support teachers and the teachers working in what I need or when. District 39 should investigate how to better utilize common planning time that's currently available to teachers, and those all are around differentiation. Regarding personalized learning, the District 39 recommends the use of the following definition of personalized learning as a guide to continue investigating the potential benefits for students, and I'll read that. "Personalized learning is a guided instructional approach where learning is student-initiated, student-driven, and teacher-facilitated. It allows for learning experiences to address distinct learning needs of children. In a personalized learning environment, students take an active role in their learning by exercising their voice and choice in setting learning outcomes, establishing learning pace, and monitoring progress." So District 39 administration will continue to investigate a personalized learning model as the best approach that fits the needs of District 39 students. And finally, District 39 plans to embed these recommendations into the 2018-19 strategic plan, which will be presented to the Board in September.
Thank you very much, and that brings us to annual business.
Yes, enrollment update. Since the April Board Report on Enrollment, an afternoon kindergarten class and a first-grade class have been added at Ramona, so those were some of the reflections that you saw earlier in our budget. These additions were due to enrollment surpassing the Board guidelines at those grade levels. However, separate from what we budgeted, across the district, the number of overall homeroom full-time staff has actually reduced by four since 2017-18, reflecting a slight decline in overall enrollment. Dr. Guwaki has the report.
Thank you. As Dr. Lechner shared, there's been a slight decrease in the number of homeroom teachers in kindergarten through eighth grade. At EC through fourth-grade schools, the district decreased by two homerooms this coming school year, and at High Crest, we've decreased by two as well. For the last two years at High Crest, there have been two extra sections, both at fifth grade and at sixth grade, for the last two years. This coming school year, we've returned to our 16 sections at each grade level, so there won't be that additional team needed at sixth grade. But those students have graduated and moved to the junior high, so we continue to have a two-teacher team in seventh grade and a two-teacher team in eighth grade additional. I think that's it for the changes.
Any questions from Board members?
I was looking at the numbers, but I didn't do this calculation. Are there any other blips like that rolling through the system? I mean, like you said, there is that two-year period that made the High Crest higher and now it's going to make the junior high higher. Are there any other blips, either up or down, that are rolling through the system with the information we have right now?
Not significant, that's standing out as is. I will tell you, kindergarten enrollment seems to be down a little bit, but we usually see it return to what we expect by first grade, so we monitor it as the year progresses too, in preparation for spring planning.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question just on the format of the table. What is the difference between the number completed and the number expected?
That's a great question. It's one of my favorites. So we have an expected amount of students that are going to be coming to each grade level at each school, but parents need to go on and register and tell us they're coming back to school in the coming school year. And so, beginning in about April, when registration opens, we ask parents politely and then maybe not so politely. not so politely, to go online and tell us, are you coming back to school in the fall or not? And so, when our secretaries return in August, our building secretaries, they contact individual families and ask them basically that question, and if parents are coming back, they have to register. It's an annual process.
Okay, so is what I'm seeing telling me that it's not done yet?
That's exactly right.
Yeah, okay.
It's much closer to 100% now, but this was from last Monday.
All right.
That is correct. And we have an annual fall housing report, which will reflect the actual picture for the school year, and that comes up in October.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, let's move on. To the annual tax compliance notification.
Yes, and this falls in the category of annual business, and every single year, the business manager reviews contracts and records to assure that tax advantage obligations comply with applicable federal tax requirements. This has been completed. Ellen Crispino, anything to add?
Yes, the system establishes due diligence practices and sets responsibility to maintain records in the event the IRS contacts the district. The IRS has an active audit program regarding tax-exempt bond issues. Adopting, maintaining, and complying with adequate record-keeping practices will help the district answer IRS questions should an audit arise. The district is currently in compliance.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the fiscal year 2018 Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report.
This also is an annual requirement. At this time each year, the district is required to post detailed salary and benefits information for teachers and administrators, and this information will be posted on the website after tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions? Great, then we'll move on to our annual review of serious safety hazard findings.
Yes, and we're getting them all done in August this year, all these were annual reports. But the school code requires the Board of Education to annually review and reaffirm its traffic safety hazard findings previously approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation. The district has an approved safety hazard along Glenview Road at Big Tree Lane. District has other safety hazards on file with IDOT going back to 1999. It's important to understand that safety hazards do not provide District 39 additional funding from the state. District 39 continues to offer fee-based transportation to all of its students in our district. So by offering transportation, District 39 addresses the needs of safety hazards. Additionally, District 39 is not required to waive fees charged to families in these areas. This practice was discontinued in 2006. Ellen Crispino, anything to add?
Nothing, thank you.
Board members have any questions?
Is, I have one question. Does this mean, since it's been approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation, that they're going to come in and correct the safety standards?
No, there's nothing to correct. And what we hadn't done in the past is to review this annually, because if we don't review it annually, we have to go through a research every single year.
Right, right, okay.
So now by each year reminding the world that we have this, and because we have transportation, there's no other real requirement. We provide school transportation. If we were in a situation where we didn't have busing for kids, then we'd have to talk about how we would address that.
Address that, okay.
Yes.
But it just means that they recognize that there is a hazard there, but nothing's going to happen about it, okay? Thank you.
I just have a question for clarification. This is only in the context of busing.
Only, yeah.
For the school safety.
Right, so.
This isn't, I'm thinking of how we were talking about safe walk routes and bike routes, that's a different issue.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just about, and again, there's no real hazard per se, but what they're saying is that somebody walking to school, and then when they're really young, should be careful, but because we provide busing, we're covered.
I get it.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, can I add something? I think, but I think what, maybe what Tracy was getting to is that we also do another process, right, well beyond this legal minimum.
Correct. Yes, that's correct. And the village is reviewing some of its safe-walking routes to schools right now.
And we're involved in those conversations, or we are not?
Yeah, oh yes, I guess.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. That brings us to our school security update.
Yes, ensuring the safety and security of our schools continues to be a primary goal. We have a whole bunch of practices that we've been establishing over the years, and we're proud of our efforts, but given the school violence that was experienced in 2017-18, we conducted yet another thorough review of existing safety procedures and developed phased plans for improving our safety and security in our schools, and Todyin DiBonte has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Luckner. I'm presenting on behalf of the administration, who has spent a substantial amount of time reviewing ways to improve safety in the schools. Our safety process included touring all buildings with Officer Pavely, our school resource officer of the Wilmot Police Department, and representatives from the Wilmot Fire Department. A review of input gathered from administrators, staff, and parents, compiling, reviewing, and prioritizing recommendations, and developing a plan for phased improvements and budget accordingly. Recommendations were categorized into three phases. Phase one items were immediately addressed. These involved process changes. Phase two items required additional planning and budget. They were either completed in summer or are planned for this school year. Phase three items were considered but have not yet been planned for because of substantial cost or unrealistic implementation. For each section, I'll provide highlights. The full list of improvements is in your board report. Some completed phase one items are outside supervision standards, specific zones for supervision were identified, ensuring two-way radios are available for use, and making sure staff are easily identifiable by using colored vests. Practices such as student entry/exit were identified as well. Access badges or proximity cards. School access badges are now in all Wilmot Police Department squad cars, so they can gain access to our schools when there's an emergency. Mass notification improvements. Our administrators or principals have an app now that allows them to alert staff and parents immediately in the event of an emergency. Some in-progress phase one items are new visitor procedure, beginning this year. Driver's licenses or state IDs need to be presented to the school secretary upon entry and will be returned when the visitor leaves the building. Daytime large group events. Uniquely looking tickets will be distributed to parents and collected or shown on a cellphone to the staff. This was piloted successfully by a couple of schools this spring. Access to make PA announcements. Equipment has been ordered to make PA announcements from any phone in the school and not just from the front office. So in the event of an emergency, staff member picks up the nearest handset and notifies everyone else. Some in-progress phase two items are door locks. This completes the purchase and installation, the work that's being done this year, of remaining classroom doors and locks, so they can be locked by teachers inside the classroom, not having to go out and fumble for a key. Social media checks, creating protocols to be followed when a concern for a student is noted. We're also looking at proactive monitoring tools that can scan public social media accounts. Security cameras. Adding, we're adding cameras to every school, along with a monitoring station, to watch the live feed. So as the office staff glances up, they can catch things before they become a problem. As presented, our phase one and phase two work is either completed or in progress. Administrators responsible for implementation will be checking in regularly on progress. We will review the effectiveness and make adjustments where necessary. Are there any questions?
Board member questions? I have a question. On the social media checks, you mentioned the students. Do we have any plans or ability? I mean, ideally, I would think that we continue to check social media of all the people who are involved with the children, whether it's the children themselves or the adults who are involved with them, frankly, you know, board members and others that may come in contact with them. Is there any issue with doing that? Do we have plans to do that?
This item in particular is more aligned with, we notice, a student having trouble, and before that student acts out or reacts or breaks. Checking their profiles, typically, students cry out for help. They let people know that something is going, bad is going to happen before that bad happens. So we're deciding what that threshold is and when to take a peek, obviously, at the public profiles. The other piece is, there are new tools out there now. Sports stadiums, malls, and others use them, where they monitor public profiles and get hits on phrases that are of concern. These could either be active shooter phrases or suicide comments, suicidal comments, and then would flag and let us know. We have, what you're referring to, looked at staff upon hire. It's not, that's something that's a separate practice, I think, that HR would probably need to look at a little further. I would imagine there's some legalities with it. However, public profile is a public profile.
I just want to add that this is not 100% of the stuff that we're doing. We have some confidential work that we've done with the Wilmot Police Department that we can monitor things that we're just not permitted to share, but it's an excellent question, and we are definitely being careful.
Okay.
One more clarification, keyword being public profiles.
That's correct. The key word's public.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. And that brings us to our board policy review. Oh, I'm sorry. The Support Staff Union Letters of Agreement. Sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Yeah, there are two proposed letters of agreement with the Support Staff Union. Letter Agreement One is a result of the recent Janus Supreme Court case. The recent ruling prohibits unions from collecting fair-share fees from non-union members, because the current Support Staff Union contract indicates that the SSU is able to collect, SSU Support Staff Union is able to collect fair-share fees. This letter agreement is necessary to align with the contract with current law. And the second letter agreement proposes a stipend for staff members who volunteer to supervise students at evening events. There are a few events each year where students are invited to attend evening events without their parents or families, such as the Freaky Friday at Highcrest Middle School. And these events require additional Support Staff Union members for supervision. Historically, Support Staff Union members are paid at their hourly rate, but recently we've had difficulty securing adult volunteers for these events. As a result, we're seeking a stipend that increases their hourly rate by $3 an hour. Dr. Guwacki, anything to add?
No.
Board members, do we have questions? Great, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to board policy review.
Great, I'm just going to turn this over to Dr. Guwacki.
So this year, we'll be reviewing Sections 3 and 4 of board policy. We're starting with Section 3 tonight. Most of the policies for Section 3 are presented for first read. Some suggestions with regard to names, I think one renumbering. We also have a new policy being proposed, Policy 6:135, which is newly required by law, and so this policy reflects that requirement. So feedback?
Questions, thoughts, comments? Go ahead.
I have questions, specific to the new policy 6:135, accelerated placement. And I'm thinking about it with the combined consideration, but we're putting it on hold, standard-based grading. What's the criteria? Like, how, I know that's a big question, but where do we even begin with criteria and how, who's accelerated, who's not? It says here it can start kindergarten or first grade early, the qualifiers, and where would, how would we even know those standards without having, like, if even a percentile?
Yeah, this is an easy one for District 39. These are practices that we've had in place for years. Now, other school districts have nots. They have, like, allowed children to accelerate without any standard, you know, procedures or practices. So we've been doing this for a long time. This has no impact on how we do business. It's just a new policy that we have to adopt.
But where it says, you know, all stakeholders, you know, come to the table in this decision, and parents are referenced in this policy?
Yeah, we've had kindergarten acceleration before. Parents make a request, we do an assessment, we meet together, we determine if it's appropriate or not. We've done this before.
Here's my question, though. So, and again, I'm probably oversimplifying, but just to have, like, a black-and-white comparison or something, again, related to this, I don't want to say elimination of grades, but whatever, moving towards a different grading system, where would a parent, other than, like, getting the vibe, or their kid seems bored or whatever, be able to understand, you know, maybe their kid should advance, or bring up that conversation just on a progress rep, I mean, what if they think so and you don't?
Yeah, this is frequent that this happens, and we're, again, we've got practices in place. This has nothing to do with standard-based grading at all. It's more about academic achievement, some of our math test scores or other assessments that we use, and the children that qualify really stand out significantly. Like, we have, we have sent teachers from Highcrest to Harper Elementary School to teach an advanced math class for a pupil before school. We have accelerated students within individual subjects, you know, for math, for example. And then we've also promoted kids to higher grades, but it was also a part of a team effort with the teachers, the administrator, the parents, and also the assessment tools that we use to determine that. And literally, you just look at how the student compares to their peers, and if somebody is, like, way out there, that's an easy decision, but if they're within the range of all the other kids in their classroom, then we would probably say no.
So you're saying we're really not changing any practice?
No.
What we're just doing is codifying or putting it to policy?
Yeah, most other school districts have never done what we've been doing forever. They don't, they don't have practices in place.
Well, we just call it DST, or differentiation.
That's more than differentiation. Differentiation happens within a classroom. This is literally accelerating.
It's like neutrum math would be an example of, okay.
That's exactly right.
Other questions? Yep.
I have a comment that just is in general for the other four policies, and I will be then submitting my picky responses to all of them at a later date. But in general, you know, the title of this section, you know, there's general school administration, and it was just something that I noticed, we changed all of the names of the titles of these. We took away, on some of them, you know, policy, we called some of them, we had subtitles of duties and authority, and then we called some of them policies and goals and objectives, and some of them responsibilities of the district. Basically, what I'm, what I was very confused by in this section in general was, it seems that we've got four different groupings of, we've got the Board of Education, we have the new superintendent section, we have the administrative personnel other than the superintendent, and we have building principal and assistant principal. Those are the four different groups that we're trying to address. The section that addresses the, what I'm reading as duties and authorities of the Board of Education, to me, the entire section speaks only to the superintendent board and responsibilities. It doesn't speak to, to me, the board, the duties and authorities actually of the Board of Education, not, it speaks to the responsibilities more of the superintendent. And so I'm wondering if this whole thing, am I wrong?
So Section 2 is all related to the duties and responsibilities of the Board of Education. Section 3 is all related to school administration.
Right, so this is all about school administration. You hire me. All of your responsibilities are in a different section.
District administrators, building admin.
So this is like the administrator, as it relates to the Board of Education.
So we crossed off the, okay, so it's out of, when it was pulled out of context, it didn't make sense to me. I apologize for that oversight, because then I was reading through it, and I'm going, why is this, okay. Then I guess the other thing that I would ask is just that, then, I always harp on this, consistency, 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 that in titles throughout the section, we just be consistent in how we label things, because it makes it easier for everyone to understand what we're talking about.
Just give us your specific, okay, great.
I will. Thank you.
Yeah, I had two questions about the accelerated placement requirement. So do we know why the state put this in place? Do we have a sense of that?
I'm guessing because school districts that didn't have established I'm guessing because school districts that didn't have established practices were using arbitrary approaches to doing it?
Yeah.
And not really having a solid, you know, approach to solving these questions and concerns?
Yeah. And I think my, my second one is, I'm well aware of our very accelerated placement programs like Nutri Math. And I understand that the kids that are in that section are just, they're definitely in the top, you know, whatever, 5%, 10% nationally of students. And then they've been broken out to be in the, you know, top of the top. But, but I, my understanding is there are a lot of children who test very high, probably 90th or above in math, and don't get accelerated placement. And I'm, and why is that? Or is that something that we should think about addressing in line with this directive?
Our, I believe that our approach to Nutri Math is the perfect example of what school districts need to be doing across the state to identify the highest level of achievement. And again, Nutri Math has been around forever. It is established by the township. It's not just District 39. Nutri High School sets those standards. We have multiple assessments as required by this law. We already have that in place.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, are we doing enough? I mean, do we, do we have a pretty restricted population that we're, that's getting all this special attention? And then what's the next level? And, and that level nationally is a pretty high level. So I would think that the parents coming into our district would expect their kids who are placing in the 90th percentile or near there to also get accelerated placement. Are we doing that?
Yeah, we have other accelerated classes at the junior high besides Nutri Math.
So I'm just going to interrupt for a second. It's a fine conversation to have, but let's keep in mind that we're in the, yeah, this is about a policy. So I want to, I'm going to limit the comments on this a little bit because we're getting off into a different topic. Tracy, if you want to make a comment, I don't want to cut you off, but...
I just want to remind that we, we have just been talking about in the strategic plan, different, differentiation, et cetera, that, as Katie had referred to in the earlier meeting, we hire all our teachers with the expectation that they can differentiate in class. So don't think that necessarily, although the question is absolutely, you know, an authentic and good question, that children are not being addressed if they're not in the highest accelerated math. They are differentiated in class. Thank you.
So, John, I just want to encourage you to follow up with Ray. And as we want to talk about this in the future, let's make sure we do talk about it. I just don't want to get too far off on, during a policy question.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other thoughts on policy? Lisa?
On 310, I don't have Board Policy 130 in front of me, but do we want to add a number 7 about safety? I mean, we have this increasing focus on the need to be safe.
Any other comments, questions, et cetera? And just as a reminder, our process is, and Ellen, you've referred to this already, but if you have more specific wording changes, we'll want to get those to Dr. Glawacki. And, Dr. Glawacki, by when do you want us to get them to you?
Yeah, we have to get that timeline set up again.
Yeah, tonight would be ideal.
Okay, well...
End of the week.
Okay, that, that's fine. We'll, we'll get that back, set up back. But, so end of the week would be great. And obviously, since it's, since this is the first meeting and we don't have the schedule set up again, you know, communicate if that's not going to work out for you. Great. I think that takes us through the board policy review. And that brings us to another opportunity for the audience to address the board. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? Come forward. And as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. And please state your name and the community of your residence.
Good evening. My name is Erin Stone and I live in Wilmette. I know that the D-39 kids don't start school until Thursday, but in our house this morning was the first day of school for more than one of us. I work in D-36 to the north. And today was the first day the kids showed up, which was absolutely delightful. And actually, right before I was here, I was starting a grad school program. It was in a classroom for the first time since the Clinton administration. But I was not the oldest, I was not the oldest person there, which shows you're never, it's never too late to decide what you want to be when you grow up. And like six of you on the board, I had a child starting their freshman year at Nutri today. As I dropped my daughter off and was pulling away, a minivan passed us and I saw the mom of a set of twins that were in Elizabeth's kindergarten grade. And one of them was in her class. And I immediately flashbacked in my mind to when the two of them were standing in the front row at the kindergarten graduation ceremony, singing the adapted version of "New York, New York," which was first grade, first grade. And I thought, wow, that went really fast. And as I was fighting back tears, I thought about how overwhelmingly prepared she was for this transition. And indeed, she texted me after school, after cross-country practice, and the text just said, "School was good," which is the kind of text every mom wants to get. And she was prepared for this transition because of all of the hard work of everybody in D-39. All of you, all of the D-39 folks in the back of the room, who worked tirelessly on behalf of our children every day. The teachers and support staff who have dedicated their lives to educating children and to keeping them safe, as Mr. Demonti's presentation tonight deftly indicated. The world has changed since my daughter started kindergarten, and you have adapted to that change remarkably in order to protect our kids as much as you can. And for that and for everything else you do, I thank you. And keep up the good work and have a great school year.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments, questions? Please come forward and remember to give your name and your community of residence. And you have three minutes.
Good evening. Victoria Shoemaker.
You're, sorry, could you turn on the mic?
Good evening again. Victoria Shoemaker, Wilmette. We appreciate the District 39 Administration and board members' attention to the petition to postpone the introduction of MPE progress indicators at Highcrest. The petition has collected 254 signatures to date and is accompanied by numerous comments from concerned parents. We are pleased with the district's decision to pause implementation of the standard-based progress indicators at Highcrest for purposes of further review and discussion. We look forward to collaboration between District 39 administrators, the board, teachers, and parents to ensure that District 39 continues to provide student assessments that adequately reflect students' academic performance and inform both students and parents of students' academic progress. We are hopeful that District 39 will ultimately build upon the existing grading system and implement any changes that eventually deemed necessary to ensure effective, consistent, and informative assessments in order to prepare our students for junior high, high school, and college. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments at this time? Okay. Please come forward and state your name and community of residence. And you have three minutes.
My name, my name is Greg Beidel and I live in Wilmette. And over the years, I've seen that District 39 has staunchly been based on evidence-based practices. And what was completely absent, as far as I can tell, in the information provided to parents, is any evidence-based reasoning as to why we are moving from a grade-based system to what seems to be a lot like a pass/fail system. I, it's a drastic change, and it would seem like we should, if we're going to do this, have solid research evidence showing that this not only doesn't harm the children, but actually is an improved outcome. And that it's an improved outcome in the context of other changes. Most of my familiarity with these kinds of systems is that you not only have to change the grading system, you also have to change the teaching system in order for this to be effective. We all know how hard students work in pass/fail classes, right? It's just a disaster. I mean, they don't really try. I'm a professor at a university, Northwestern in particular. If, in my experience, the amount of effort kids put in is strictly proportional to how many points are on that particular assignment. I don't think kids in junior high school or high, middle school are that much different than that. So I think we need substantial evidence that this is a good system to go to. And I do have a question about the claim that there is differentiation within the classroom. I've seen that in many District 39 districts. I'm not sure where Highcrest lies in that. But last year, my daughter was explicitly told that she was not allowed, her teachers were not allowed to provide her supplementary material. She had been given lots of supplementary math in Harper, in Highcrest. That came to a crashing halt. She will now be in the advanced math at Highcrest, but, you know, last year was kind of a waste for her. So I don't know where that was coming from. So maybe the district is on board, but maybe not all the teachers are on board. Finally, I think it's really important that we clearly hear what direction the Wilmette Junior High School is going to go. Are they going to move to an MPE system? Because that raises the possibility of the students getting crushed when they go to Nutri. And we paused Highcrest, but I'm not sure where we are on the Wilmette Junior High School discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments, any other comments at this time? Great. Moving on. The next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like removed from the consent agenda? All right, all right. Seeing none, Mr. Penzica, please proceed with the motion.
I move to approve the personnel report dated August 27, 2018. I move to approve the annual review of serious safety hazard findings. I move to approve the attached Support Union SSU letters of agreement. Support Staff Union, SSU. I move to approve as first reading Board of Education Policies 6:135 accelerated placement and 3:40 superintendent, and revised Policies 3:10 Board of Education Policy, 3:50 Administrative Personnel Other Than the Superintendent, and 3:80 Responsibility of the Building Principal and Assistant Principal. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between June 19, 2018 and July 23, 2018 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $764,503.66. O&amp;M Fund, $143,838.57. Debt Service, $121,305. Transportation Fund, $43,529.32. Tort Fund, $94,310. For total I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between July 24, 2018 and August 27, 2018 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $571,31.77. O&amp;M Fund, $204,197.69. Transportation Fund, $59,014.88. Capital Projects, $1,400, no, $1,41,774. Tort Fund, $10,535. For total all funds of $1,885,953.34. I move to approve the manual checks issued between June 19, 2018 and July 23, 2018 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $700,156.54. O&amp;M Fund, $105,075.95. Transportation Fund, $86,270.55. Capital Projects, $294,963. For total all funds of $1,186,466.4. I move to approve the manual checks issued between July 24, 2018 and August 27, 2018 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $345,321.63. O&amp;M Fund, $2,538.30. Debt Service, $5,191.69. For total all funds of $353,051.62.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John says ready?
Yes.
Tracy Kearney?
Yes.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
Ellis Sheff?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Baz?
Yes.
Allen Sternweller?
Yes.
Markstein?
Yes. The motion carries. Next, we, I seek a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 District 39 annual budget. To adopt the annual budget.
I move to adopt the annual budget for Wilmette Public School, Cook County District 39, as presented in this report, reflecting all anticipated revenues and expenditures for a period extending from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Motion has been made. May I have a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John says ready?
Yes.
Tracy Kearney?
Yes.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
Ellis Sheff?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Baz?
Yes.
Allen Sternweller?
Yes.
Markstein?
Yes. Motion has been voted on and is adopted. The, now may I have a motion for the fiscal 2019 Wixie annual budget?
I move to adopt the Wilmette Community Special Education Agreement annual budget as presented in this report, reflecting all anticipated revenues and expenditures for a period extending from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Motion has been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John says ready?
Yes.
Tracy Kearney?
Yes.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
Ellis Sheff?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Baz?
Yes.
Allen Sternweller?
Yes.
Yes. The motion carries. Next, I would, I seek a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing a permanent inter-fund transfer.
I move to adopt the attached resolution authorizing a permanent inter-fund transfer in the amount of $750,000 from the Education Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund as contained in this report.
Motion has been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the police, the clerk please call the roll?
John says ready?
Yes.
Tracy Kearney?
Yes.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
Ellis Sheff?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Baz?
Yes.
Allen Sternweller?
Yes.
Markstein?
Yes. The yeas have it and the motion carries. Thank you very much. And that moves us to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Do we have any good in welfare? I'll have one good in welfare, which is for the board. Tomorrow's opening day, sorry, Wednesday's opening day, thank you. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be there. I've gone a couple of years in a row. It is a really fun thing to do. I encourage any board members who are able to attend to do so. It's, I think, the one thing that is, surprises me every year, even though I already know it, is the diverse group of folks that we are hiring, all of their interests, all of the things they're doing, the amazing creativity that they show. So I heartily encourage you to go if you are able to go. All right. That being said, may I have a motion to adjourn to the executive section, session, and to discuss, excuse me, specific personnel?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel.
Motion has been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
John says ready?
Yes.
Tracy Kearney?
Yes.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
Ellis Sheff?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Baz?
Yes.
Allen Sternweller?
Yes.
Markstein?
Yes. The yeses have it. We are adjourned to executive session and the time is 8:09 PM. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for coming.